Evening, everybody. It's 6:30. At 6:30, we'll call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2016 to order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is weekly briefing. Do we have any weekly briefing items? Public comment or announcements? Okay, we'll move on. Chief, do you want to introduce, before we get to the consent agenda, your newest, our newest, Special Reserve Police Officer?
Mr. Chairman, I would love to do that.
Thank you.
This is Ryan Fazino. We're very pleased to recommend him for the position of Special Reserve Police Officer. And just by way of a little background, they say timing is everything. Well, Ryan has just graduated from the full-time police academy. He sponsored himself to go through the full-time police academy. We love the initiative. He did a number of years as a part-timer over in Dennis. Started as a cadet, and then the last couple of years, he's been a reserve special police officer over there. So not only has he done the reserve academy, but the full-time police academy also. He's a Cape Cod resident, so he grew up in Mashpee, went to Mashpee High, so we're, you know, and as I mentioned last week, the interview process we had, starting with the written exam, and then the interview of the 26 candidates before the panel, and then the final six before the command staff, Ryan finished second in that process. So he is our number-two guy, and what our plan is, is to bring him onboard a little early here as a part-time reserve officer. He's very excited to be a member of Harwich PD. So he's going to work with us as a part-time reserve, and when that full-time position kicks in, hopefully with approval at town meeting in May, then we're going to bump his hours up and start his field training, and then in July, when the position becomes official for the PD, he'll come onboard as a full-timer. So we're really hoping the timing works out. It certainly looks like it will. But Ryan is an outstanding candidate, like I said, finished second, and we're very happy to have him.
Okay. Can you just explain for the public, and maybe for anybody sitting here, any restrictions placed on a reserve officer, if you will, as opposed to a, you know, regular full-time officer, as far as what they can do or not do?
Well, I guess some of it may depend on title. If you're a seasonal officer, you can only work certain times of the year. But a reserve officer, as long as they have that reserve academy, can actually work a 40-hour work week if we choose and have the money to pay them, and the position is authorized and they're duly appointed. But usually, the special reserve officers are used as, you know, just part-time. In this case, our plan for Ryan would be, you know, less than 20 hours a week until the town meeting, and then hopefully, if our budget looks good, we're going to try and bump him up to, you know, close to 40 or 40, and get his field training out of the way. So he'll be ready to go for July.
And we have, obviously, in our budget discussions, have a full-time officer in there.
Correct. That's correct.
Assuming our budget goes forward, that would happen, so.
So we've got our fingers.
Great. We're going to vote you in in a minute, but Ryan, we welcome you to Harwich, and hope you have a great career. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Janelle, we're going to hold item C as a separate item. We'll talk about that in a second. So would you move the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve A. minutes from March 14th, 2016 executive session; B. approve the request by the garden club to close Pine Street between Lower County and Route 28 from 6:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. for their annual plant sale at Don Park on May 28th; D. approve the appointment of Special Reserve Police Officer per the recommendation of the police chief; and E. approve the Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $700 per the request of the Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator.
Second. Okay, move to the second, and consent agenda items A, B, D, and E. Any discussion? Here, and then we'll put it to a vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. It's a vote. Thank you. Okay. On C, on the consent agenda, it's approved the contract agreement between the town and the Cape Cod Chronicle for legal advertising. Michael, did you have a question or comment?
Yep. There's very limited information in the packet, so I'd like administration to give us an explanation on the bid process, and why a three-year contract.
Well, I think a couple things. One, we did send out, Sandy in the office does the work, so there's only a few people, a few entities that actually meet the requirements under the law. Generally, the law says we have to find a newspaper of general circulation within the community, so that provides a little bit of a limitation. She did send it out to the three different newspapers that do cover Harwich, and in the response, she only got the one response back from the Cape Cod Chronicle. Why the three years? We generally do three years on these contracts. So I think that, you know, pretty much just the simple element is that that's the practice that we've had, so that's the practice that we've put into place.
And Chronicle does our work now, right?
Yes. Yes.
Is there an amount from last year, what we spent Chronicle last year? And then I would just add that without a competitive bid, maybe it'd be more appropriate for a one-year contract?
Well, I don't know. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. We did look at the, the cost has been going up. As people use other media, the cost to do the legal advertisements have been climbing. We did increase the budget, and we do have enough, we believe, in FY '17. A little bit in terms of depending upon how many ads we put in does drive the cost factors. So when a year in which we do more ads is going to go higher, a year that we do less ads, it's going to go down, obviously. In terms of the three-year versus the one-year, I don't really have, I guess, too much of an opinion. We do run the risk, though, that if we don't do the three-year and we don't lock that in, then if the prices go up even more, then we do get caught. So it is a little bit of a, a little bit of a speculation. I would think, too, as the law requires that the ads be put in as newspaper of general circulation, I don't see the legislature changing that at the state level anytime soon. So we are going to be committed to newspapers for the foreseeable future, and as more newspaper readership goes online as opposed to print, the likelihood is the cost is going to go up quicker, I would think, than to wait to go out.
What was the escalation from year two?
It's five dollars. It goes from $5 to $5.50 per column, and then $6 per column inch.
I just have a couple of questions. What did we pay last year? $4.50?
I don't think she put that in there.
And then my other question is, do we only have to advertise in one newspaper?
Yes.
Yeah, the legal requirement is just that newspaper of general circulation. So in the event that we couldn't get it in, we could pick one of the other ones. In general, I think the other ones are even more expensive.
Actually, I have a third question.
Go ahead.
Is $5 a, what do I want to say?
Column inch.
Right. But is it a, because it's a bid, is it a lesser rate than the general public pays?
I would assume so, yes.
And if I might, this is only for legal notices.
Right.
It's not if we're advertising for an opening and position. It's just for those that need legal notification for mass general laws.
Right.
So like all the hearings we hold and things of that nature, you have to put in that area?
You done, Janelle?
I'm done.
Yeah, I'd suggest we hold this until we get that information, what we paid last year, and whether or not there is a break for signing a three-year contract.
Okay, what's the date that the current contract is up?
This would go July 1st, 2016.
Okay, so we have time.
So we could probably wait one week.
So we have time, yeah. So the request is to bring back the...
Current rate?
Current rate, the new rates.
And then the budget for the last two years?
So we can look at what the advantage of doing three years of one year is.
Not the budget, the spend.
Yeah, the actual.
The actual.
The actual spend, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
That's fine.
All right, good. All right, next, public hearing presentation is on all business, on new business. This is the night of petition articles. Those folks, they're all sitting over on this side, except for, Duncan, you may want to move over there. It seems like they're all...
It's just the sun in their eyes, it's all.
Oh, it's down now, isn't it? Okay, anyhow. So anyhow, folks that are out there submitted petition articles, obviously, we had those articles. They are in the warrant. The board wants to understand what your articles are about. So it's, you know, we just want you to spend a few minutes and tell us, you know, what your article is, what it consists of, what you're looking, or hoping to achieve by your article, and then we'll get into any questions that we or anybody else may have about them. So first one up is Gingerplum Lane Reconstruction. Now go up on the podium, please, and introduce yourself, sir, and so everybody out there at home will know what, who you are. And we're assuming you live on Gingerplum Lane.
I do. I'm John McQuade. I am the, currently, the president of the Gingerplum Lane Association. We are a private road. We've been there for a very long time. The road was initially paved something like 30 years ago. We've had, it's showing its age at this point. It tends to flood a bit. Potholes are an issue. The town, and consistent with town policies, the town has plowed our road for a number of years. Last, not this past fall, the one before, when they came out to inspect it, the gentleman from the Highway Department told us that this is in rough shape, and you're going to need to do something soon, or the condition of the road won't qualify for plowing because it's in such rough shape. Based on that, we undertook to say, to see what our alternatives were, and we eventually concluded that the town betterment process was the ideal vehicle for us. Based on that, we made a, we engaged an engineer, obtained bids, made a submission, which you have somewhere. We had, you know, very good signature rate from our members, and, you know, we are, you know, looking forward to having a road that is paved and smooth and drains, et cetera, et cetera, does everything that a well-constructed road should do. I know you've done some betterment petitions in the past, and where, I'm not sure how familiar current members are, but we're, we're looking, you know, we've, the same engineer that did the other ones, we've engaged, and we've looked at those roads, and they look a lot better than what we've got. So that's what, what we are looking for, is to have approval here in a town meeting to be able to repave our road sometime this fall.
And the purpose here is, quite frankly, to get your road fixed.
Yes.
Not have the residents have to pay one large chunk all at once to get it done, but rather, you're basically reimbursing the town through a betterment program, increasing your real estate taxes.
Exactly. It's a lot easier to make sure everybody pays when you can send out a real estate tax bill. We also want to make sure we do it right, so that Right. None of us that are, one of the big motivators for all of us that are sitting there is, if we get the road redone, in our lifetime, none of us are going to have to worry about this again, instead of talking about it every June.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Anybody out there, any questions? Good. We're all set. Thank you. See you at town meeting.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you bring your friends and nina butters and whatnot, and...
We'll be there with our popcorn.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next.
Are we going to vote?
No, we're going to wait till, excuse me. What I would like to do on all the articles, I think I've said this before, but I'll reiterate it, is wait until Angel's back. They have a full board, so it's first two weeks, first two meetings in April, whatever it is, the dates, we'll plow through these things. I just, I think it's better if he's here. They have a full board. Okay? All right, next is Article 52, is defray the expenses of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library.
If you want to.
Did you bring any books for us or anything, or? Didn't bring any books for us?
We did not, no.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, this is a surprise. I didn't know I'd be presenting tonight. I'm Carol Dickerson, Chase Library. Patty Tork, Chase Library.
Good evening, ladies.
Chase Library.
Hi.
Our application is for continuation of some restoration in the Chase Library.
No, these are operating funds. These are the operating funds, not the CBC.
This is the warrant, $20,000 warrant. This is not the CBC.
This is the operating, this is the annual, you know, you're here every year.
I was going to speak about that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So this is the traditional request that is submitted every year for $20,000 to be divided equally among the, between the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library. The money goes towards defraying the expenses of the library. Quite frankly, without the assistance of the town and the Mass Library Association, I know Chase would have to probably close, and I'm guessing Harwich Port would as well. Just to give you a kind of an idea, our projected total budget, salaries, utilities, books, ancillary expenses, insurances, all those costs, our budget this year was projected to be $18.80 in revenue, and our total expenditure, I'm sorry, this was $14.50. This was the last fiscal year. And our total expenses were $16,200 approximately. So we had about $2,600 in excess revenue over expenses, which was a really good thing, because we had a capital expenditure. We spent $1,800 last fall to replace a sidewalk that was very uneven, filled with water, and froze all winter long, which was a real safety and liability issue. And we still have another section of the sidewalk to replace this spring. So if we do come up with a little bit of extra money, and a lot of that depends on our annual appeal and the attendance at our other fundraising events, that's how we get, you know, a tiny bit of excess revenue each year. It usually goes to a capital expense.
Do you have on either or both libraries, I want to say, I don't, you might call it circulation, some folks might call it, how many customers do you actually have in the course of a year? Do you have any idea?
I didn't bring that information. I'm very sorry. I know that it's, I don't even want to speculate what it is.
Okay.
I can get that for you.
No, that's fine.
I can email it to you. But for three years now, at least, our Chase Library has had a winter author series, and the attendance at each one of those has increased every year. This year, for one of them, we had 42 people. That's a lot of people to fit in a little Chase Library. So, you know, we've, we've really begun to try to branch out and connect with the community on a larger, wider scale and provide more services.
Okay. And this is, I'll just remind you, but this is an annual, you know, traditional request, I guess I'll call it. It's been this level for a number of years, if I remember correctly. And it's split, the $20,000 is split evenly, I think, between the two libraries, so it's 10 and 10. Okay, any questions from the board? Linda?
Is there anyone here from the Harwich Port Library?
Don't believe there is.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next is Article 53, promote the town of Harwich. The Chamber of Commerce, Jeremy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thank you for sending that flu over to my house. I think that was quite the nice thing to do, but... By the way, since we have the libraries in here, I just want to point out, and I didn't bring one up here with me, but the, the annual town report.
Oh, I have it.
Yeah, I'll have it.
Thank you. Is this a prop?
Where'd I just have it?
I don't know. You just had it somewhere.
I just showed it to you, right? You put it in your bag. But here it is.
There it is, yeah. Annual Harwich Town Report is available down outside the clerk's office. Please feel free to take one. This is great coffee table material. It's got all the activity of the, reports from the different boards and committees. It's got what happened at last year's town meeting. If you want to know who makes what kind of money in town, it's in here. There's a lot of good information in here. It's a good, it's kind of a good handbook. And if you have friends that are not too involved in town government, you might just say, hey, why don't you just take this and read this some night, or just wander through it some night, and you start to get a feel for what goes on in the town of Harwich. And again, they're downstairs in the, outside the clerk's office, there are boxes of them. They're free. You paid for them. They're part of your tax dollars, and nice picture on the front of this boat in, let's see, where is that, West Harwich? And our friend next door on the back cover, so. Okay? With that, Jeremy?
All right. So thank you for inviting us here to discuss our warrant article for, for this coming year. Just quickly to go over, what I have in your packet there is last year's magazine, as well as a PowerPoint presentation for some of the statistics and some of the information that we've seen over the last fiscal year, over the last year. All kinds of information as far as how many visitors we had through our visitor center, website statistics, marketing promotion, Facebook, Twitter posts, all that kind of information. So there's lots of information there for you to review at your leisure. Last year's magazine, as I said, is in there. We're about two to three weeks out from producing the annual publication for this year, which is on track as it normally is for this. We usually like to have it the first, second week in April. This year, the focus is strategically on the new branding concept, the warm side of the Cape. It's very people and family-oriented. There's lots of information as far as all the activities that go on throughout the town, calendar of events, town and municipal information, beach sticker information, all kinds of information in that, just like it's been in the past in the magazine. We also had some features. We have a nonprofit feature this year, which is a new feature in the magazine. We'll be at the same page count for last year, at the 72, 64, 72-page count. So there's lots of information going on throughout that. New this year, we're reaching out to some new target market areas to distribute the magazine. Last year, we were able to distribute some into the Boston metro area. Through a partnership we had, we were distributed through some of the Stop &amp; Shops in that area and strategic zip codes. This year, we're reaching out and distributing as well through some of the Stop &amp; Shops and some of the other areas into several of the zip codes in the Connecticut area, in Putnam County, and quite a few other of the key target counties that we had. One of the things that we did last year, is our second year is, which was a great plus for us, is we sell beach stickers. So one of the benefits to that is we see specifically where people are coming from in our target market, who come to our visitor center and who come to our town. So we're able to use that zip code information when they apply, and use that to strategically market in the areas that make the most sense for us, and get a lot of the marketing out of that. Again, this year, we're level funding the request for last year, which is $25,000. That goes into marketing, as well as some visitor information services. We continue to run a strictly volunteer-based visitor center, but there are other expenses associated with that. Most of the money goes towards, actually, about 95% of it goes towards marketing and events and activities. We, this year, we're coordinating eight musical strolls on Wednesday nights. We have our event, the Toast of Harwich, which this year is a different event. It's a trolley tasting tour. The goal there is to bring people into the restaurants, so they know where the restaurants are, and they come back knowing where the great food that they have was. The main point of that is that one of our strongest attributes that we have in this town is our food, is our food service industry. We've got lots of fabulous restaurants, and it's a number that we continue to grow each year. We've got the Mad Men opening up this year, and it's a way that we can continue to increase the tax revenues received for the town as well. So some of the information, I quickly updated this stuff. So 2014, we had 15,900 visitors come into our information center, strictly information. Last year, we had just under 17,000. It was 1,6984 with our website and our bathroom. We track the bathroom separately, so people that use the bathroom and then come in are tracked separately. But last year, we had just over 60,000 people in the bathroom that then, you know, came in for information. So in total, we see about 70,000 people through our information center. We are the number-one stopped-at visitor center in Cape Cod, on Cape Cod. So, which is a fabulous thing. We're very proud of it. What we always hear is the reason that they stop there is cleanliness. So that's a key that we do. The Highway Department does maintain it throughout the summer. We maintain it as well. So we do deep thorough cleanings twice a week in the summer. The town comes and takes out the trash on a daily basis. So that's a, that's a great thing, and we're proud of it. We do a lot of maintenance on, on that. And just for point of reference, the Route 6, exit 6.5 visitor center gets just under 40,000 people. So that's a huge difference that we see in that. Some numbers to go by, local options, meals tax, last year was 340, for the, meals was $347,306. This year, it's estimate, we estimate it at just over 378,000. We've already hit, I believe, the 348,000 in the first two quarters for the fiscal year. The rooms tax is $592,232 last year. Our estimation's $633,530. One of the main reasons for that is not only have we seen some bump up in some of the rates, we've seen higher occupancy rates. Of course, Wacoast Resort and Golf Club has just received its five-star from Forbes. They're only one of 75 in the country, and only one of 174 in the world to have that distinction, and they're right here in Harwich. Of special note to that is, I know people often say that they advertise themselves as being in Chatham. Wacoast has just undergone a, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of rebranding, and they have taken Chatham off of all of their information, and they are promoting themselves strictly as Harwich. And that is a big part of that, is because of the brand and what we just did in going through all that stuff. So that's a big thumbs-up that we've had.
It's huge.
How much toilet paper, for reference, do 60,000 visitors use?
What?
How much toilet paper do 60,000 visitors use? I'm just curious.
We've got two squares to spare. It's a lot of toilet paper.
Yeah.
I think we go through probably about a case a week in the, in the in-season, probably a case a month in the off-season. It gets used a lot in the off-season. You know, it's, it's a high-traffic area. Lots of people use the facilities. It's, it's open a lot.
You know, back when we decided to do that, you know, get rid of the old town bathroom that was down there and combine them into a partnership, if you will, one of the main impetuses was to provide a decent place where people could use facilities, which they need.
Oh, absolutely.
I can, I can joke a little bit about it, but I mean, it's an important element of people coming to town. There's no doubt about it.
Well, and it's something, you know, I don't know if you guys read the newspaper, but it's something that less and less, the state is shutting them down, you know, the county's trying to take away funding for the Route 6, 6.5 rest area. There's lots of different things, and it's something that we have the ability to shine. You know, certainly, we just installed over the last couple of years, restrooms at the beaches. You know, it's something that you don't think of, but we all know when you're driving down south, you know, when you go down 95, you stop at the same bathroom every single time, because you know what to expect. And it's the same thing. We have people that come and visit, and they'll drive down 28 and say, you're the first clean rest area that we've seen.
How many members do you have, Jeremy?
We have right now 348. We've, we've been in a growth, growth pattern. 2011, we had 265. We're up to 348. Last year, we had 330.
Okay. And if I understand it right, on the music strolls in Harwich Port, now you're taking over the whole thing, right? The Merchants Association is no longer involved, right?
Yes. The Merchants Association has officially announced that they're on a one-year or longer hiatus. We'll be taking over all activities facilitated with the musical strolls for those Wednesday nights, as well as some additional marketing materials that they had done in the past.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, quick question.
Janelle?
Can you remind me, if it's the spring or the fall, for the Toast of Harwich? Because I know there's two events, and I can't remember the names.
So the Toast of Harwich, Fooding Around Toast on Wheels is what we're calling it this year.
Okay.
Is Saturday, May 14th. The fall event, we used to have the Taste of Harwich, which was held at the tech school. We haven't had that for about six years. But we do have a Fall for Harwich event, which includes the Cranberry Festival, the parade, and we'll be back here probably within the next couple of weeks with another key event as part of that, too, that is sure to bring lots of, lots of people into the town.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody out there with a question for Jeremy? No? Thank you, Jeremy. Thanks. Okay, next is Article 54, which is supplemental annual allocation of Mass Cultural Council for local cultural council grants. Am I here to speak on that? Any volunteers to speak on it? Anybody want to speak on it? No? Okay. The requested amount is $3,000, requested by the Harwich Cultural Council. And this is to support grant awards to artists, performers, and interpretive scientists, bring events to local venues, to enhance the cultural experience of Harwich citizens for all ages. So they're seeking $3,000. We've done similar things in the past. We've done similar things in the past, and quite frankly, I think it's money well spent, again, promoting the town and getting more people interested in what's going on in Harwich. Okay, then we'll move on to Article fifty-five, establish a charter enforcement commission. Sandy, how are you?
I'm fine, Peter. How are you?
Just great.
Everybody?
Welcome.
This article is a petition article that proposes to establish a five-member elected charter enforcement commission that follows closely a model that's been used in Provincetown for a number of years. I haven't been able to trace it all the way back, but fifteen at least that I can find. It's basically in response to concerns locally expressed that there really is no mechanism for any kind of redress, if you will, if there is a perception that the charter is not being followed. It's a thirty-year-old document. Sometimes, as things age, they tend to be forgotten. It's not a police commission. It's only a responsive. If somebody comes in with a complaint, they can hear it, they can see if it's valid, ask the, whoever it is that's caused the problem to correct it, and hopefully, that's basically the end of it. There is obviously further option for a charter enforcement commission to take it to court if they ever had to. I seriously doubt it would ever get to that point. It doesn't address anything outside of the charter. It's simply within the framework of the charter. What have I missed?
I also...
It has to go, it has to go to town meeting for a vote.
Sure.
Then it has to go to a ballot, which would be actually a year down the road, and then a year beyond that.
Yeah, to get people to run for it.
Yeah, to get people to run for it. But it's, basically, it's a two-year process. Town meeting, then the following year, the vote. If the town ballot accepts it, then of course, it has to go to the Attorney General to see if it passes muster.
Sure.
And then the following year, there would be an election for the members.
So the commission members themselves would not be the ones, and I don't, I'm saying this a little facetiously, looking around for...
No.
Charter violations.
No.
They would have to be brought to them...
Right.
With some kind of, I'm guessing, form or thing you'd have.
A petition or a complaint.
That they would say, you know, "I think Fred is doing this."
Yeah, you're, you're the charter enforcement commission and I've decided that you're doing something terribly wrong, or somebody's doing something, and I, you know, bring you an official notice that I would like you to look into this, and then you have a hearing.
Yeah.
And if you decide there's actually something wrong, you ask, you know, you notify the offender, if you will, to modify their habits.
And do you ever, excuse me, do you ever see the need or possibility that someone, say on this board, I don't mean anybody individually, that's why, just being sitting up here, would need to have legal representation in the process if it, if it went beyond you folks? Or, because I think in here, you do say, "Where's it go after you? If you're not happy with it, what happens?"
If, if the, if the, if the behavior continues...
Yeah.
Then the commission has the option to take it to Superior Court. Would somebody need legal representation at that point? I suppose so.
And would the commission need its own legal...
I think it's unlikely that it ever reaches that point.
Okay, but I'm just trying to understand, there's a saying there, "I think you do that." And would the commission itself need town council or something to represent them doing that?
Independent counsel is what this article proposes.
Okay.
And it'd be anticipated that when there is an actual charter enforcement commission, that they might come in with an article looking for five or ten thousand dollars to be set aside in case they ever needed it. It's not something that would require any kind of ongoing budget.
Understand.
Yeah.
Understand. And do you have, I mean, if this commission was in place today, do you have six violations you'd think are out there already, or two violations, or none, or...
I don't think it's a question that needs to be asked or answered at this point.
I'll take that to mean there are some, but in your opinion, yeah, so, okay.
Possible. Nothing happens in a vacuum.
Okay. All right. Linda?
You said that there's a belief that the charter is being violated, certain provisions. Could you give us some ideas as what those violations might be?
That's really not my purpose in being here tonight.
So you're not going to answer the question? Okay.
I am not.
Anybody else?
I just have a couple of questions.
Yep, Janelle.
So the wording in six-nine-two, I guess I can kind of interpret it two different ways. A vacancy on the commission may be filled by the remaining members of the commission.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that they will appoint somebody, or that they themselves will fill that position and not appoint somebody?
They would appoint somebody.
Okay, so I kind of read it both ways, just so you know.
Well, just also, too, I should tell you, there is a hearing, the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee is having a hearing on this, April sixth, I think. So that would probably, if you really want to dig into the weeds, that would probably be the best place to do that with them.
What time? Do you know what they, Anita's...
Probably six-thirty, I thought.
At night? It's a Wednesday at six-thirty?
Six-thirty is noon, seven o'clock is the...
Seven o'clock is the hearing, yeah.
Okay. April sixth.
With a petition article, you can't change the wording, right?
Can you change the wording?
I think you can't.
I think you can change any article, as long as it's within the scope of the article. You can amend it.
Don't you have to, on a petition article, we've been told before that you have to have the people who sign the petition have to agree to the change.
If you, if you're changing it prior to going into the warrant, I'm sure that's true, but on town meeting floor, it can be amended...
In motion.
As long as it's within the scope of the article, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
I had one more question.
Sorry.
Where is it? The fund?
What, which section are you on?
I'm looking for it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The six-nine-twelve, "The town shall establish a fund to enable the commission to pay the costs and expenses, including fees for independent attorneys, fees related to filing, blah, blah, blah." You kind of said something about maybe ten thousand dollars just now in your explanation.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that once the commission is established, if it's established, and we're a long way from that, but that they would put an article into a town meeting for five, ten thousand, you know, just some small amount of money, while smallish in the overall scheme of things, and it would just sit there.
Mm-hmm.
It wouldn't have to be necessarily an annual thing unless suddenly litigation blew up, and I honestly don't see that happening. You know, this point of this, there are mechanisms on the state level to do some of these things, but this brings it down to inaccessible local levels. Because the average person who really feels strongly that there's something wrong usually doesn't feel strongly enough to go to the state. And you don't really want them to. I mean, these are the kinds of things that can be handled in-house peacefully and just get resolved. And I personally see this as that kind of a situation.
Sandy, how's it some working in Provincetown? I haven't followed it, so...
I went back looking, I didn't really talk to anybody up there, but I went back looking, you know, Googling to see if there had been, you know, major blowups over this thing, and there really isn't anything. So there hasn't, it hasn't made headlines. If there has been any issue, it's been taken care of in-house.
The name of a five-member board?
Yes.
They do.
Yeah, this is almost, there are some minor changes, but this is almost identical to the Provincetown model.
Okay. All right. Board set? Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Happy to work again.
No, you need to speak at the mic, so, because they're on TV, so folks can hear you.
Sorry.
See you.
I'm quite naive when it comes to politics of the town, which is why I'm trying to come to these meetings. When I first read about the commission proposal in the paper, it sounded very adversarial to me. And I'm wondering if there have been in the, if there have been reasons in the past why someone might feel strongly about something not being taken care of by the town, whether or not that was ever brought forward to the people who represent us in the town, or if it just simmered and stewed and that's why. I'm trying to understand the need for the commission, since we have open public government and people can speak their mind. So if you could address that, that would be helpful to me.
Well, again, without getting into anything specific, there are concerns periodically that surface, that there are overlaps or infringements of one function over another that have been bothersome to people. Whether it's been brought to the attention of those who might be engaging in this is another question, but it's not an adversarial situation. It's, it's a place to take concerns. It's a place to get them addressed. That's local, that's easily accessible. This is not a commission that's going to be go, you know, looking under the bed. It's not policing. It's simply responsive.
I, I think, if I could just throw something in here, I guess, I think what's trying to be done here is, you know, we can all read a document, the charter's a document. Well, it's a fine document. Every document is subject to interpretation, and, you know, maybe we're looking, in some cases, it'd be, you may read it and think that my responsibility is this, and someone else may read it and say, "Well, no, that's not your responsibility, you should do it this way." So I think that's part of what's going on here. I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, you know, I think any of these things are, you know, subject to interpretation. So. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Next one is Article fifty-six, violation of residential buildings by law. Duncan, how are you?
I'm doing great, thanks. How are you all?
We're just wonderful.
Thanks for the opportunity to have a quick review of this. Very simply, I introduced this because I thought it was a very easy thing to explain in about ninety seconds why a cost-free discussion of this, these, excuse me, why I could explain to people in a few seconds why it was, I thought, outrageous to ask for three hundred thousand dollars without any discussion of costs, for the purposes of essentially, effectively, the alteration of historic fabric of the, of this particular unit in town. I attended several of the meetings of the Housing Authority and the Housing Commission since, I think, October of 2014, and when the topic came up for raising town funds for the Judah Chase House, a number appeared out of the air, three hundred thousand dollars. There was no discussion of the origin of the money, or the origin of that, that particular figure. And in my decades in working with P&Ls for Fortune 500 companies, I've never once had a conversation where people voted on something where they couldn't prove a price or a cost. And I just found it intellectually insulting and morally egregious that they would ask for essentially seventy-five years' worth of the tax, tax yield on that particular property to essentially result in a question mark as to the disposition of the property, disposition being potentially demolishing, at one point, the home. And so far as I know, the, there is no real solid track record for either the two parties that are interested in that, carving up that piece of property and carving up that three hundred thousand dollars to kind of play ball with the historic interests of the community. So it's pretty straightforward. I think also, one other consideration that was very straightforward to me was, this pits the use of money between historic and affordable housing, and I don't think that they should necessarily be antagonistic. So that was the, the quick read of that for me.
Okay, so let's just be very clear for the folks that are sitting out there. This article is specifically focused on the Judah Chase House and the barn that's located there at ninety-seven Route twenty-eight in West Harwich, right?
Correct.
And so I think what you're getting at here is you're saying that the, I'll just call it, for lack of a better word, housing funds not be, not be using that property for any purposes other than keeping the property intact. I'll just say it that way.
Correct.
No, it's not demolishing the property or subdividing the land or what have you.
Right. That's it.
Okay. Questions from the board? Michael?
So based, based on what you just said, is your, is it a problem that the board, after going through two committees, the board makes a decision? Is it the three hundred thousand dollar number, or is it the tear down of the Judah, Judah Chase House?
It's the process. Having gone, sat through the meetings of the authority and the committee, where members had to recuse themselves, and I honestly was heckled at one of the meetings just for wanting to raise a question about cost. My question was a net question, a very simple question, and it's not a personal thing, it doesn't bug me, but a third of a million dollars, to me, is a lot of money. That's a lot of money in this budget. And without any accountability, or discussion, or framing of the nature of the cost, again, I find it intellectually an insult and morally egregious for somebody who's a taxpayer here.
Okay. Can you tie that to the Judah Chase House? Can you tie that to the, I mean, it's a piece of private property that already has a demo permit?
Yep, yep. So they had, they took out the demo permit, right? They got it? The, the period's gone by, they can do it as they see fit, right?
Yeah.
But to get yourself into a situation where you're going to bring another three hundred thousand dollars into the property, where it's already, public funding is involved with that, correct? So we're putting another third of a million dollars, the valuation of the property versus the home, the number, I don't understand how these numbers work at all. I just don't get it. So if the idea was, after some conversation, that there was going to be a discussion and collaboration to keep some sort of contact between, you know, parties that are in friction, shall we say, there's no evidence that there's a capability on the part of the housing folks to actually preserve the historic asset. So they have a zero percent success record, by their own admission, in both meetings. So that, to me, is not a really satisfactory claim to move ahead on. So if you don't include costs, you don't have a plan, and you don't have a track record, these are the kind of things that should be red flags. You know, it's privately owned, they dispose of it as they see fit, but, you know, to involve the rest of us in a demolition thing and to involve my tax money, and my, you know, my dad paid taxes, taxes here as a non-resident, which is, you guys know what the rate is, for fifty-one years, that's, you know, to go and, and have that kind of money go into the kind of thing where you don't know what's going to happen, you don't particularly track it, and there's no discussion of it, and there's no cost, you have votes, like in the, I think, the authority meeting, there were two people voted, two, two citizens voted, without a discussion. I mean, I, I just don't, I'm sorry, I think it's egregious.
Okay. We're not going to get into too many details tonight, but I do know that this board, when we did the West, I just call it the West Harwich Area, like, forum, I guess, a couple weeks ago.
Right.
There is an attempt to, to get the two parties at least talking, a little subgroup together, and I know, we, we look forward to hearing back from them at some point, whether they made any progress or not, that's not tonight's discussion.
Right.
Hopefully, they will make some progress and figure out how to make this all come together before we get to town meeting, but...
Right. And it may come off, we may be all set and, but we could take this item off the...
I don't know. Tonight, we're just trying to understand the petition article, that's all. Linda, do you have your question?
Just, just first, just to be clear, there is no three hundred thousand dollar request in front of the Board of Selectmen. None has been made.
Right.
And there's nothing before, so let's, I just want the public to understand that nobody has made that request, we have not voted on it, et cetera.
Right.
So that...
At the time that, that...
I understand at the time, but I just want to say, as of right now, as of...
Correct.
There is nothing that is in front of us in terms of that.
Okay.
So I just want to say that, and also to reiterate what Michael said, private property, this is private property, and they, they do have a demolition permit.
And by the way, as regards to any requests, the night that we had the, so, I'm just calling it the forum, I think we shared everybody the process involved.
Yes.
Which is a very clear process in my mind.
Peter, if I may?
No, no. Janelle?
And I also just want to add, that three, that three hundred thousand that was not requested yet is actually from the housing fund, which is not a tax base. It's actually a revenue account that the town gets. Just so the public is clear, they need to know all the information. It's not three hundred thousand dollars in taxes.
That's a good point, Janelle. It's, comes from the...
Cell tower.
Cell tower revenues, which town meeting did vote to use for affordable housing many years ago. So that's a good point to make, that it is not coming out of the tax levy, it's not coming out of tax base, it's not coming out of free cash.
Right.
That's what it's there for, and there is a process. Lou?
Peter, I believe when this issue is discussed, that some members of the Board of Selectmen might want to recuse themselves, and I think that's important. First...
You're absolutely correct, because I will recuse myself from a vote on this.
I don't know if it stretches just to a vote, Linda, some say that even the discussion or sitting there is a problem. So, that's, and again, I, I have to say that maybe there is an issue with the Charter Review Committee. But in terms of private property-
Well, hang, hang one second, Lou, just wait a second, this is, this is just a petition article.
Right.
In my opinion, Linda, there's her right to be here and discuss this, so we're just dealing with the petition articles.
Okay.
And I really don't like the accusation, Lou. Anytime that something has come up for Habitat for Humanity, I sit on the Board of Habitat for Humanity since the summer. I have recorded that at the town clerk, it is well aware that anyone likes to go down there and see, I have told her this. And anytime that there has been a vote, I have walked out of the room and recused myself. So, consequently, I can sit here and listen, and at town meeting, I can vote. But I will not vote as a Board of, Sitting Board of Selectmen on anything to do with Habitat.
So, what you're saying is I shouldn't have stood here and asked if there was a potential conflict?
I think I would have appreciated if you would have said it to me directly, as opposed to toss it out like a dung bomb.
Well, I think she, I think you addressed it, so, let's, let's move on.
In terms of the private property, I would like to state that no one has the right to tell anyone on private property what they can do with their private property. Hundred percent agree with Duncan on that. But public funds are being asked on that private property, therefore, those funds do need to be addressed. What I believe Duncan was truly saying is, if money is going to be given, public money, for any venture, that a plan needs to be put forward, forward, in detail, so people can see the plan, understand it, see where the money goes, see what the benefit is, and see how it's to the advantage of the town to take an historic piece of property, divide it, if it affects that historic piece of property or not. That's, I believe, the intent of the article, or the petition article that was put here. I also sat through both the committee meetings, and there weren't very many questions asked. And that's, this is the time to ask the questions, thank you.
Michael, first clarification, Lou, when you first stood up, you said one or more board members may want to recuse themselves. Is there two of us that you're speaking to?
No, I wasn't, that was so, that's why it was a general question, Mike, it wasn't addressed to any particular person.
Thank you.
But I guess someone took it upon themselves to understand.
Thanks, a second is, they're asking, this article is asking us for a, a, enter into a grant agreement. And from what the petitioners said, and what Lou has said, it seems, as long as we agree not to tear down the Judith Chase House, the three hundred thousand dollars isn't an issue. Is that correct?
You mean an issue, excuse me, you mean an issue with the petition article?
Correct, I mean, they're basically asking us to, to save, not consider the three hundred thousand, unless the private owner agrees not to tear down the-
Not, it's, the wording, I think, has to do with compromise the integrity, divide, compromise, or, I can't remember the exact wording that I, that I came up with, but it's in there, the verbiage, and it's not just tear down, it's like, you know, they want to lop off this chunk, or what have you, it's, the property is the property.
It says that, well, "Project that will in any way jeopardize, compromise, or destroy the fabric, historic fabric of any building or structure on the site, nor compromise, divide, or petition land," is what it says. Where'd he go? He sat down already. Okay, Sally?
Good evening.
Hi.
I have sort of a different, maybe simpler, simpler idea about this. In town, we have a historic commission who is, their job is to protect and promote the, the retention of historical aspects. We have a housing committee in town, their job is to promote public, public housing. So, the way I read this article was that, where the town funds the historic commission through the CPA, they, they fund housing through the CPA, so now we have one, one group that might be using money to dare down what the other group is trying to save. And so, the ultimate, my personal ultimate point of view on this is that perhaps we can talk about this, because I think going forward, housing and historic can do great things together, if we can learn how to figure that out.
Yeah, and I think I said the night of the forum, whenever I was here, there were a lot of great ideas sitting out there, a lot of good things can happen out in Twenty-Eight between West Harwich School and this property and everything else, the road, and, you know, other things that are going on out there, the, the Captain's Row incentive, or initiative. If all you folks can get together and work it out, you can be a win-win for everybody. But, you know, I'm waiting for some activity to see what happens there, I mean, I think this board is as well, Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to that end, after that, after that meeting, we did have a meeting in my office with some of the, the principals from both sides. I think that there was a sense of a meeting of the minds, but as these things happen, it's kind of the devils are in the details, so we're trying to pull together the details, and once we get some kind of agreement that both sides, the written word, instead of just the verbal word, we'll have that back to the board and hopefully be able to move forward.
I mean, quite frankly, this article, as it exists, is in the warrant, is going to town meeting, so it will be brought up in a some exposit motion, it will be discussed on town meeting floor, and people can have their say, and hopefully, in the meantime, this, I won't call it a subcommittee, but group that, you know, we think is trying to work through some of these details, maybe they can figure it out between now and then, so it works for everybody, Michael?
Independent of the group getting together, though, this is, the, the article is what we're here to discuss. I believe this went to legal, did this go to get a legal opinion, someone requested a legal opinion?
Yeah, it's part of the process that was established, I think Linda helped to establish that when people have a, a concept that they want to put forth on to the town meeting warrant as a petition, that they sit down with myself to kind of go over, to make sure that at least what's being presented can be discussed at town meeting without technicalities. And so, Attorney Giorgio did go through this and did weigh in on the structure of it, so I think that it's something that should be valid for town meeting to, to consider.
And we've gotten that legal advice from, from Giorgio, did he, specifically, is this legal to, to put this kind of petition article on a single property?
Yeah, actually, that, that's a great question. I, I want to make sure, John Giorgio is the attorney for the town, so he rendered advice to the petitioners. So, if the petitioners took that advice and, and crafted, you know, I don't want to say exactly the way, but I guess exactly the way he had crafted it, you know, talked to them, then it should be valid for town meeting. A question did come up, I'll give, I'll give Linda credit, because I think it was a really good question, that this is not, I, I know in my conversation with Attorney Giorgio, you can't do this as a zoning article, because it is spot zoning, you have one specific location. So, the decision was made to not do it as spot zoning through zoning, but to do it as a general bylaw. So, it's actually, the request is for a general bylaw. So, I have been asked, we do have a specialist that deals with zoning issues, and I've sent the material over to him. He did call me on Thursday afternoon, so I owe him a call back to, to discuss. So, we are having a, a second opinion, if you would, kind of look at that question, is if you have a general bylaw that is basically substituting itself as a zoning bylaw, does that create any issues? So, that's a question that's being asked and looked at now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. All right, next is Article Forty-Five. Chief, you've been here a few times lately, and it's my understanding that we took the town council your bylaw that you submitted, and he had some, I guess, comments or editorials or cleanups of it, whatever.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's, this is the revised copy that town councils looked at, and I'm in full support of it. It looks great, they tightened up some of the language, and with my conversation with town council earlier today, just some of the language that was added and tightened up is because of what the Attorney General's Office is looking for. Just some red flags in the, in the other version, which could lead to some issues. So, some changes that jump, may jump out at, at you folks, the, the nine AM to seven PM timeframe on the allowable solicitation was changed to nine AM to nine PM. And that may seem late to, it seems late to me, I know, but that, that is, there's case law on that, apparently. So, that's one of the, that's an example of one of the positive changes in here that will, may have led to some issues. They, they introduced a graduated fine schedule instead of a flat three hundred that was in the previous version, which is fine with me, hundred first offense, two hundred second offense, three hundred third and subsequent. The, the exemptions or exceptions that were asked last time, obviously, I guess I misspoke, the Girl Scouts are nonprofit, right, so that, they would be exempt anyway, but under this, clearly, under eighteen and not-for-profit exempt, obviously religious organizations, that's all listed in the bylaw now, so there is no question. So, it also allows for a, an appeal process, if you are, if I deny the permit, they can appeal to the board. They have to notify, you know, that's within five days, seek that appeal, and then the board can hear, hear the argument on appeal. So, it looks very, very solid and, and good to me, I think it's common sense bylaw that a lot of other communities have, like I said before, and I don't see any issues with it at all. And like I said, it would dovetail nicely with the civil fingerprinting bylaw that was put in place last year, I believe, that Chief Mason put that in place, which allows us to do criminal background checks on these type of applicants.
So, Chief, I, I don't know where I saw it, but I saw someone's written comment from a citizen out there that sounded like, oh, the chief's going to allow people to go door-to-door and solicit, like you were starting something new. Today, as we sit here today in the town of Harwich, what are the rules and regulations for someone that wants to go sell, I'm just aluminum siding, door-to-door?
Exactly, none exist.
There you go.
So, if it doesn't exist, then technically, it's allowed. There's no regulation against it or requiring permits, that it's allowed, this is our issue. So, I would like to see this introduced, I think, like I said, common sense. My biggest concern is the background checks. I don't have an issue with somebody permitted going door-to-door following the regulation, but they need a background check.
Well, and the fact that you'll actually have a, I'll call it official identification that these people will be carrying, so, wearing, so that folks can feel as comfortable as they can that someone's legitimate, I guess, I would say.
Right, they have the credentials, and they've been vetted through the process.
Linda?
Chief, good evening, how are we going to publicize this to the community? So that they know to check to see if someone has the ID, has the permit? How are we going to publicize this?
Yeah, an education process, well, I, I didn't really think about that. There's a number of different options, I, I can think maybe Channel Eighteen might be one of them. Obviously, on the, I can speak on the floor of the town meeting as to what, what that is. And, you know, a good point also is to get the word out about the aspect of this, is there's a no, no solicitation list that you can register for, and that would just be, very simply, your address. It wouldn't be, I don't believe a name or anything would be required, it would just simply be, you can't go to this address, and that list is provided to any organization or individual that wants to be permitted.
To the town administrator, could we think about that, as to how we could publicize this, you know, Channel Eighteen?
Website?
Maybe a note, the website, maybe a note in tax bills?
Chamber of Commerce would be interested in making sure that members know about it.
Could we, could we think about this, not this second, but put something together so that people can know that if somebody shows up, that they're supposed to have a permit?
Right.
And if they don't, that they're supposed to call the police department.
There is some timeframe on this, though, because it has to pass muster up at the AG's office first.
So, we have plenty of time for this, but just-
You've got a plan for the implementation of the passes, that's for sure.
Of course.
Janelle?
But, Girl Scouts, Little League, Religious, Greenpeace is a nonprofit political organization, newspaper distributors, they don't need any kind of ID or passes, right?
Correct, as long as it's nonprofit, not-for-profit or religious, political, that's all enumerated in the bylaw here. So, there are a number of exemptions.
Just thinking, like, myself, people that would come to my door, they seem to be more this ladder, you know, all of these nonprofit organizations. Is there a way we can require some of that? I mean, do they, can they, they don't have to, there's just no legal way?
In my discussion with town council, trying to gain a better understanding of why some of the wording went in the way it did, the only issue is with an organization, if they hire a, a professional solicitor, then they have to get registered as an organization and an individual, even if it's a nonprofit organization. Religious is carved out completely, but, you know, that's, that's an area where I thought it was, it was in excellent addition, that, you know, even if it's a nonprofit organization, but they've hired a professional group to-
Fundraising group.
Fund, right, then they have to get registered and go through the process.
Okay.
So, if the Girl Scouts decide they're going to hire some linebackers to go knock on your door, they got to be registered, as opposed to the little Girl Scouts?
Exactly.
Well, they're under eighteen, so, but what about, like, I don't even know if the pergs exist anymore. I did that once, some of, Mass Mass Perg, all the pergs, but, you know, they have a lot of college kids, you, you go canvassing and you collect money. Would, would the employees of the nonprofit count as those being hired, as an outside group? Or are they exempt because they're employed by the nonprofit directly?
As long as it's, as long as it's all completely nonprofit, as soon as somebody is making any mon, money from it, then it's going to fall into this definition of, that they're going to have to register.
Oh, good, okay.
That was, that's the way it was.
So, basically, Greenpeace can't come knocking on your door anymore, not that they do any, but, you know, dating myself here.
You just gave them the idea.
But they can't anymore, because they, those canvassers are paid a hourly rate.
Well, this has to be passed, but I mean-
Right.
And gone through the Attorney General and the whole bit, so.
Correct.
Okay.
But I think with this wording, there's a much better chance of it passing muster at the Attorney General's office, it's been, you know.
Look forward to seeing you on Channel Eighteen explaining it before a town meeting, so that-
Okay, how, what's the timeframe on that, about the turnaround on the AG's office?
Yeah, right?
It takes a while, yeah. Well, you know, in the spring, with all these town meetings happening, you know, typically, they get jammed up a little bit as to what they're looking at, I mean-
Right.
Because stuff comes out all at once, you know, I mean, it doesn't flow evenly, so.
Right, I just don't want to pull the trigger on it too soon and have the citizens of the community think it's already in place when it's not, so.
No, but the point is, today, anybody can come knocking at your door, basically, with no, you know, requirement for identification, and there's no real protection on the, you know, that we have imposed on the part of the, you know, on, on part of this, to have the citizenry protected, I guess, is the way to say it, whereas this is trying to address that in, to some extent.
Correct.
Jeremy? He's got the solution for you for something.
I don't have a solution, I just have a quick question. I, I haven't read the, in bylaw in its entirety yet, because I'm, I'm waiting until May, but- My question is, does this apply strictly to households, or does it go to businesses too? Because there's a few credit card people that do processing that I'd love to get on the list.
Rachel, from Cardholder Services?
That's a, that's a good question, I believe it's strictly, like, residential households, individual, I saw that. Residence, every individual dwelling unit occupied for residential purposes, for one, by one or more persons, so, it's residential.
Bummer.
You can put a sign on your door that says twelve people live here, I don't know. Okay, any other questions with the chief? All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next one, okay, next is Article Sixty-Two, prior years unpaid bills. Chris, you got this one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on, on this one, we do have a, under Chapter Forty-One, Section One Hundred B, the town accepted the statute, and any retired firefighter or police officer that was hurt in the line of duty, that in this case, we, we do have an individual that was injured, that if, now, now retired, if they incur additional medical expenses above and beyond their health insurance coverage, this is kind of a backstop provision, this Forty-One, One Hundred B, that obligates the town to pick up those costs. So, we, we do have that circumstance that has emerged. There was a transition in coverage, and the transition in coverage from one provider to another, there was a void in it. And in that void, it was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in additional medical bills. The reason why I say approximately is that we have asked our workers' comp carrier to go through and try to assess those, and we also have our attorney kind of dealing with the health insurance providers to see if the health insurance providers will cover these costs, to avoid having to, to utilize the statute. But as of right now, we're still in the process of going through that, and we are looking at a potential liability at about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Are there any other unpaid bills that we know of that we've brought forward?
Uh, no.
So, this one, we're going to wait for information, quite frankly, right up until town meeting, if something gets resolved, number gets reduced, you know, that kind of thing, so.
We will budget the twenty-five thousand as kind of a maximum exposure, and then hope that it comes in much less.
Okay, questions? Okay, we'll move on to New Business B, review of special town meeting articles and draft ballot.
And you also received a late one on that, that Sandy sent out, that was in your Dropbox?
The one from today.
I thought she sent it Friday, it may not have popped up till today, I'm not sure.
Yeah, just, just on that, that's the reason why I was kind of hesitating, because it's not necessarily a, an old bill, Yeah, just, just on that, that's the reason why I was kind of hesitating, because it's not necessarily a, an old bill, but we did put in there that we will be requesting at this town meeting, that there would be, in the special town meeting, that there would be a need to do a transfer. Actually, the finance committee got me started thinking about it. They asked me one night, they said, oh, do we have any, any need for transfer requests? And I was there along with the finance director, and we both sat there, and we couldn't come up with anything at the moment. And then, as usually happens in this business, the next morning, I think I had the DPW director show up at my door and said, oh, by the way, I have a shortfall of $165,000 in the trash, and what's your plan to address the shortfall? So I guess the good news to that is that when we bring in more trash, we do receive additional revenue. The problem is, we can't access that revenue because we set the budget early. So in talking to Andy, the finance director, we had a discussion, and that $165,000, we can transfer, we do have a surplus in one of our accounts, or turnback, anticipated turnback, in one of our accounts in health insurance. So we have sufficient funds to cover it, but it is above and beyond that 3%. So what we would do is accomplish it at the special town meeting. So it's just so funny how things happen, but we asked that question that night, and not a day or two later, we had a, the DPW director came in. So the good news is that the higher the, you know, trash limits are for the amount coming in, we are seeing that on the revenue side, so there will be a positive on the revenue side. But just as a product of municipal finance law, we can't access that this year. So hence the, the need for the transfer.
So you're saying that will be an additional article, Article 4, I guess, at the moment?
Yes.
In the special, is that right?
It'll be Article 5.
Yeah, actually, on the summary, the reuse of the CPC funds for the tax title, so one is a.
So let's just walk through what articles we have in here at the moment, so, and this is in the special. Got Article 1, which is fund the snow ice deficit, right?
Yes.
Article 2 is fund the repairs the community center.
Excuse me, Peter, can I, can I just ask, it says 250, what's the expectation of that at this point?
You know, it's funny, I was at, we were at a department heads meeting and I asked that question, I was told, oh, it's $186,000. And then Mr. Hooper came back to me the other day, and there were additional bills that came in, so it was $221,000 is the number. But with the snow this morning, it probably will be in that neighborhood of the 250, hopefully.
It'll be the number that will be, and hopefully it won't snow anymore.
Hopefully, no more.
I mean, even we, you know, this is a relatively dry year, you know, compared to last year in particular, but the numbers add up.
Yeah, they do.
Really fast. Okay, Article 2 is fund the repairs of the community center due to the water leak. This is our deductible, I assume?
Well, actually, on this one, this is the, we had brought this up, that there's a special state statute that anytime we receive an insurance proceed check, so we could get an insurance proceed check for, let's just say, $100,000, and then we have to pay the people directly. So in that circumstance, in which the town receives the money and then pays it out, we have to do an appropriation for that. So it will be dollar for dollar, be insurance money coming in and insurance money going out. In this circumstance, we just sent Mr. Libby a request today to try to get a number, to see what we're gonna, what we're in for. He was also gonna try to see if, one way we can avoid this is if the insurance company pays the vendors directly without providing the check to the town. So I'm gonna follow up with him and see what the status is of that.
So this one potentially could go away?
Potentially, it could go away.
And what is the insurance account? Is that the one that's on the town budget?
I think he, on these ones, I think the accountant has to set it up specifically for the claim, as it relates to the claim.
Ah, okay.
So it's claim-driven.
Okay, Article 3 is repeal of Article 9 of the May 2001 Special Town Meeting Acquisition of Tax Title Properties. $50,000.
Yeah, I don't know, it's really a CPC article, the sense of what I got, there was a board discussion, and there was a decision that CPC made, that there was a, I guess I would call it a flawed, a flawed appropriation that was made earlier. We tried to fix the flaw by coming up with a grant agreement process. I think everyone kind of recognized that probably the cleanest way of doing it is just to rescind the vote that was made. This was a vote of $50,000 that came out of CPC to pursue owners' unknown property for, to try to acquire properties related to CPC purposes. I think in this case, by rescinding that vote, sending the $50,000 back into the CPC funds, that then gives them a funding source to do the project again with a new, which would be your number four, to basically reengage and do the tax title search in a more specific way that hopefully complies with town, the town attorney in terms of.
So let's make sure in the second to la, no, third to last sentence, this objective will now be funded from the funds appropriated by Article, it says YY at the May 2016 Special Town Meeting. So right now, it would be number four, right?
Yes, the new one would be number four.
Yeah, let's just make sure we don't leave it as YY, just because.
Yes.
That would be a terrible thing to do. Okay, so then Article 4 is the follow-on to what you just said.
Yes.
Right, same amount of money, and those are both CPC.
Yes.
Related, okay. Anything else on that, the special?
I'm just a little confused about that.
Yep, go ahead.
The wording is pretty similar. Is it different properties? Are we talking about different properties?
No, no, no.
So why are we?
This is tax title, and it's not property-specific. This is the CPC, in my opinion, asking to clean up an action that was taken. It's just bringing what was done in May 2013 up to 2016, basically five years later, to get this cleaned up, is the way I would describe it.
I think.
It's their request.
Mr. Chairman, too, if I recall from my conversation with Attorney Giorgio, and I don't know if we've sent this yet to Attorney Giorgio, we certainly will. I think part of the problem in the old appropriation, there was, the funding source came out of, I know they call them buckets, one of the buckets about. Yeah, out of undesigned fund balance. And you have, you basically have very limited capacity to use it out of undesigned fund balance. When the appropriation is made to the administrative costs, you have much greater flexibility. So I think part of that, I don't want to say structural deficiency, but some of the question that came up in the old appropriation is the bucket that it came out of and where it was going to. So this attempts to correct that by making it available as part of the administrative expenses, which you can use, you can use legal research as part of administrative expenses, and the undesigned fund balance does not allow you to accomplish that.
Okay, and we can have the CPC folks come in, Bob will be happy to come in and talk to us about this, I'm sure. No, he won't?
Yes, he will.
Okay. Refresh my memory, the special town meeting warrant dates, that it opened and closed, or is open?
It had to get opened on Tuesday and closed on Friday, the 18th.
Right, and did we get any new submissions?
No.
So this is it?
It's the five items, yes.
All right, and then we had the draft ballot associated with it, right?
Yes.
And so the first ballot question has to do with Sacatucket in Esmo Marina. And by the way, I'm gonna put that on the agenda next week to talk about.
Yes.
The plan and the funding source for it, basically. I'll just say the economics of it, if you will. And so we'll make sure we put that on the agenda next week. Angelo will be available by Skype, so we can do that.
Just one thing on that, Mr. Chairman, I know I had mentioned to you directly, Angelo had asked for what he called fixed funding level, or level debt service.
Fixed payments.
Fixed payments. So we do have a new financial advisor, and they provided that fixed payment schedule, and then the typical declining payment schedule. So what I'll do is kind of show those two options, and let the board see those and see what road they want to go down.
I remember the numbers were like 300,000 apart, something like that in total.
Yeah, the total, the total additional interest for the level was about 300,000.
Okay, so that's that one. Two is shall the town be allowed to exempt the provisions of Proposition 2 and our so-called the amounts required to pay for bonds issued to road maintenance programs, as per the capital plan. And three is the wastewater with Chatham. Just what we're talking about, if we set a date to get back to Chatham, you wait for Angelo to get back? Okay, so, but as soon as he gets back, you're gonna try and get something set up, and the more I read it, the worse I feel, so. Okay, and then we had the middle school, we talked about that, we talked about that one last week, the middle school non-biding question, so. Is that it?
I do wonder, though, Mr. Chairman, just on the ballot question on the Chatham IMA, if, and I think your suggestion last week made a lot of sense, that to do something in the, in the fall, you may want to, you know, consider having, I know it'd be expensive to have a town meeting and an election, but to consider kind of timing the election on a ballot question to that, you know, after that meeting, so let town meeting kind of decide what it wants to do with the Chatham IMA. I mean, I have a hard time, I mean, if we have to set the ballot, or the board has to set the ballot by April 1st, and Angelo won't be back until basically April 1st, should we just present this with really the two questions, the finance questions, and then the middle school? Or do you want to leave that third one on? I mean, I think just due to the calendar, I think it makes sense to do the two. I mean, we can certainly present the two options and have the two options available for the board, but I just, timing-wise, I don't know whether it makes sense to try to put that IMA one on, if that confuses people.
Well, he'll be back that night in person, right, physically, but that doesn't mean he necessarily have a meeting, so.
I would agree with Chris on this one. I, I think that we're a fair distance apart with Chatham and meetings, and we're never gonna make the calendar.
How about this, why don't we, why don't we at least, when Angelo's on the phone next week, let's put an agenda, the Chatham IMA, and let's at least talk about it, and if we decide at that point we want to pull out of it for the time being, I don't mean pull out of it forever necessarily, but, you know, we're just not ready for it. And, you know, we can all admit that for this town meeting and say, you know, we're gonna take it up and work on it, you know, after town meeting.
Because I was kind of thinking about that today, and I guess one thing I would offer to the board, I know, I think Linda had some comments that you had in regards to the agreement. I know David Young put some comments in, and I was gonna try to, you know, go through the material, and sure, Michael and Angelo probably have comments, and to try to assimilate some of those comments into basically almost a counteroffer to Chatham. I did sit in a meeting on Muddy Creek the other day with Mr. Dunkinson, kind of the guy doing some of the work on that end, and I said, well, was there a significance to you having the word "draft" on every page? And he goes, yes. So I think they're fully anticipating a counter. So I think it may make some sense to try to put something together that, that, you know, is more Harwich-friendly, maybe put it that way, to send back to them to keep the discussion going. So with that, you know, if Michael and Linda and other board members are okay, I mean, I'll take a stab at trying to assimilate some of those comments along with Dave Young's, and see if we can get something that's a little bit more Harwich-friendly.
In my opinion, I think those discussions need to go on regardless of the town meeting.
Sure.
And I think that, I think initially, maybe I'm making this up, but our expectation was that by the end of the calendar year, we're gonna have something that was sort of close, so that then we could educate, you know, make our decisions, talk to the finance committee, make, you know, get the public educated as to what this is, because it's gonna take some work to sell this, including the regulations and all that stuff. And we're just running out of time to do that, in my opinion. It's just my opinion, you know, here we are, what, how many weeks till town meeting? Five, four, five? I mean, exactly, and worried about the chief getting his door-to-door, you know, bylaw thing sold. And here we are, talking about $9 million and a lot more, you know, beyond that, so. I just really think it's gonna need, I think, next week, let's just decide with Angelo as a group, you know, we're gonna take this as something special and keep negotiating. It doesn't mean we're not interested, it doesn't mean that, you know, we don't want to move forward, but it's a process that has to evolve, and it's gonna take time to do it. And if it means we have a special town meeting in the fall, or we do a town meeting at election time, who knows? I mean, it depends on when it comes out the other end. So it's gotta work for, you know, for Harwich as well as Chatham, so why don't we just leave it at that, if you guys are okay with that?
Sure.
Do we have to sign the, we have to sign the ballot on the 28th? So that'll be the right point to have that discussion?
Well, we could bring the two versions. It's not a big deal to bring the two versions.
I just, in terms of the ballot and that concept.
We have to do it that night anyway.
Because we have to do it that night.
Yeah, bring both versions, but I think we're gonna decide. But I just like Angelo, you know, I just think it's a full board kind of discussion, if you will. Okay? All right, any else on that topic? Okay, Chris, your communication memo.
Just, Mr. Chairman, last week, I think we had a chance to kind of have a little bit of a discussion on it, and I think you wanted to have it back on the agenda. I've tried to make an effort in terms of trying to take, I get a fair amount of individualized communication, is what I called it. And in some cases, when it's individualized communication from individual members of the board, I want to make sure that the entire board is kind of comfortable with what gets pursued. And I think you had, I like giving people credit for things that they do. So I think you had come up with a town administrator action item register, and.
It's very scientific, by the way.
Yeah, no, it's straightforward, it answers the question. But I think what I'd like to do is, as items come up, that may make some sense to add to the register, and I think you had wanted to have the assistant administrator kind of keep tabs on that, if I remember from our discussion, that as items come in during the course of a week, or during the course of time, that we would, administration would bring up and say, these are the action items that we have received, and to kind of have a discussion, maybe within the administrators' section of the agenda here, that we say, well, we have the following, whatever, three, four requests. What prioritization do you want to have assigned to it? What's the timetable that the board would like to see it? And then obviously, if a request is something that's gonna take, you know, 10, 15, 20 hours, then certainly we can kind of recommend that, you know, we can do something. Especially this time of year is kind of an interesting time, because we have to focus on getting the budget squared away, make sure we have town meeting warrant. So there is some kind of crunch on the time that we have, and we can provide some of that feedback in terms of having that discussion. But I do think it makes sense to have a discussion, you know, at the, at the board meeting here to see which items the board wants us to pursue, and approximate timetable in which to pursue those.
Yeah, and quite frankly, let me, if I just jump in here. I think we lose some things, and Linda, I'm as much on this one as you, but I'm just gonna bring up a topic. And then, we've had something kicking around for a long, long time, and that's this committee handbook. And I'm not saying that anybody dropped it, or it got missed, or anything else, but it's something, you know, who knows, we've been working on a committee handbook, you probably, you may not even know or remember. But it's something that, you know, if we had an action item log, at least it would be there, and we'll be able to say, okay, that's, you know, criticality or priority number three. Okay, we understand why it isn't done yet, or it's the number one thing we need to focus on. I also think that, you know, this, this could wait, everything is gonna be challenging or difficult to implement or start dealing with until town meeting is over. We could do that, just to kind of clear the runway here, because we know we got a lot of things to get done between now and town meeting. I'm not sure loading them all in here now makes sense or not. The other topic is, you know, who does maintain this? I mean, is this, you know, is this the board's action item last, you know, I'm not picking on you, but does the clerk maintain it, for instance? Or is it, you know, just a joint responsibility, and for instance, Charlene maintains it? But I do think it's important that the board knows, you know, remembers what we're all asking, you know, to be done, whether it's of ourselves, with each other. You know, if I said to Michael, hey, you need to get, you know, blah, 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 blah done on Tuesday, and we all vote that, and say, that's great, then we put it in there, okay, Michael, next week, did you get it done too? Yeah, okay, fine, it's done, check it off, take it off, it's done, you know? But some things will go on for a long time, I just don't want to lose them, so.
I think this is great. Good job.
It's not a job, it's just a concept. Michael?
I mean, I would, I would go a little bit further here and ask, you know, on the individual communications, because basically every one of these, I can have something to say on it. What individual communication are we talking about? You know, for example, at a board meeting, January 14th, correct me if I'm wrong, you asked for an explanation on the $560,000 whoops.
Right, so that would have been an action item.
Yeah, well, here we are. At what point is the individual communication going against the charter? I mean, Chris references the charter in. I mean, Chris references the charter in the newspaper and in here as though we're not following it. I guess into the petitioner's article about the Charter Enforcement Division, is there a problem? And for instance, this weekend, I, I emailed Sandy in the front office just a request for five job postings. And then I got a, Monday, I got a email back from Charlene saying that that's a good board topic. It's not a board topic. So am I not supposed to ask administration? Not administration, am I not supposed to ask support staff for five pieces of paper, or where to find them? Is that fall under something that should go to Chris, or should go to Charlene?
Let, let me say this, that if any individual asks for something, as far as I'm concerned, it's the lowest criticality on this list, or not on this list. That this list would be for things that the board wants to get done? If, and I'm just making this up, and somebody can do time management and everything else, but if out of all this, you get this done, you say, "You know what, the board is asking us for $27,000 worth of work in two days, and we can't get it done." Anything any one of us asks as an individual, I think goes to the back of the bus, because you just can't get it done. I mean, there's a priority that has to get set here.
To that point, Peter, I think that that is the stuff that we discuss at this table, and they leave with an action item.
Right, exactly.
Because frankly, I don't believe that with a town administrator, an assistant town administrator, and two very capable office staff that are excellent, that we need to have a, an action list on individual inquiries. We should come to an understanding on what those individual inquiries are, and what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. And back to my question, and to Chris, I guess, through you, Mr. Chair, is, is me asking the, the staff in the front office for five job postings something that needs to be a board decision?
I'll let the board weigh in on that. I mean, I'll hear individuals, but, and my, my question would be, what's the intent? I don't know, you know, what's the intent, what are you gonna do, you know, what do you want it for? Is there a justification for it? Does it supersede anything else that's, you know, that's being done now? Or are you just asking for pieces of paper?
I would ask the, I would answer the question, it's a public document, and I wanna read it.
Okay.
So it's not a board item, it's not an action item.
So, so in your mind, should they drop everything they're doing?
No, and if you read the body of the email, it's not. But isn't it appropriate question to ask staff, or is it not? That's my question.
You can ask, but the expectation, you'd have to ask staff, I think, when can they get it done? And what I would support on their side is, you know what, if they get all this other stuff that has to be done, it has to go in some order, whether it's first in, first out, first in, last out, whatever it is, kinda system we wanna implement, because everybody has requests, okay?
So, I would ask the town administrator to, to answer that question, because, because reading, reading his comments in the Chronicle, and reading the email I got back from Charlene, and reading, you know, even, even the finance chair's comments on social media, as far as the newbies go, is it an appropriate thing to ask staff in the selectman and town administrator's office for something not pertaining to day-to-day business? And does that have to be then put onto your action list?
Okay, that's the first question to ask the board, ask town administrator, wherever, and it's a good discussion, quite frankly, so.
Well, I guess the way I look at it is, in reading, in reading through the charter, that if the board is responsible for setting policy, and that day-to-day administration is day-to-day administration, and it's supposed to be done through the administrator, then a request that, for, a simple request for information, I mean, I don't really have any problems, certainly, if, if, if a board member needs something for a meeting tonight, then, you know, a email to Sandy or Ann with a CC to, to Charlene and I, I don't really have any issue with that, 'cause it's, to me, that's just an information request pertaining to the meeting. But if, if, I mean, the two requests that have been made is, one is to, to do a detailed, comprehensive report on the CEVAC process, that's something, quite honestly, is probably gonna take a question of days. It, it's gonna be a pro, a, a project, and in my mind, that's one where directing staff, or trying to direct staff to, to do a project of that magnitude that's gonna eat up days of time, is something that, you know, I'd like to have a, a sense from the board in terms of what level of priority. You know, the illusion to, you know, just saying, "Well, I'm looking for five pieces of paper." Certainly, five pieces of paper's not that big of a deal. But the way that was relayed, and I, I don't think that email came to me, but, was, "I wanna understand how the search process worked for, through, was it, four different positions in the town." Well, now, does that mean we, we do an internal posting? Do you wanna know how many internal applicants we had? Do you want access to the internal applicants? I mean, some of this stuff is, is getting a, a little bit beyond policy and into day-to-day operations. And I think it, it really depends upon the, the questions that's being asked. If, if the question is, "Explain to me the process for, like, the police chief's search," I think we had almost ninety applicants in the initial search for the chief. You know, what are we, what are we looking for in terms of that? And the search committee did its work, and then presented the four or five candidates to the board. So when, if it's just a question of, "Oh, I want a job description of the chief," that's one thing. Or if I want postings, or I want the process explained, the process is, is kind of a little bit of a lengthy process, and do you want just the basic information? Or do you want, you know, how much detail do you want? And, and I think that's where, in my mind, you know, simple requests for information that helps the board make decisions prior to the meeting, I don't think there's really an issue in, in terms of that. When it comes to, you know, directing staff, one member of the board directing staff to do things that would take literally days to resolve, I think that's something that sets the priority of, what's, what's the priority of what the board wants to get accomplished.
I think on the CEVAC thing, I think we're all interested, because it does affect the budget, I think.
Oh, yeah.
We're all interested in getting to that understanding of the numbers. Now, whether that means the total report is done or not, you know, what I'm looking for is somebody to go to the whiteboard and say, "Here's the real estate taxes, here's the revenue, here's this, and da-da-da-da-da," and get to an answer, because it does affect the budget, and we need to know that. So although we didn't vote that here officially, I think that one needs to definitely get done. I guess, and I think you just hit it on a crisp, I guess the question is the level of detail you need to get that put together. But, you know, certainly I would expect, you know, I'd like to see some kinda numbers, if you will. That's just me, in the next week, that says, "Here are the numbers." And we can have a discussion about the numbers, because getting darn close, you know, on deciding what monies we have, and what's gonna flow to the water department, et cetera, et cetera, so. I, I, I'll get to you, Michael, don't worry about it. I do agree that if, if it's an open-ended question to staff, and if sta, I guess one of the things to staff is, if they think it's gonna take an, in order, some amount of time, then maybe they have to come to you and say, "Hey, is this okay or not?" You know, and like, you know, you can't say, "Does Sandy drop everything? I need ten hours of your time on Tuesday, 'cause she has other things to do." So it's a priority kinda thing, so Michael has...
So I think that that, that was a long non-answer to my question. So CEVAC, why that got brought back into it, I'm not sure. But CEVAC was a request to the entire board last week for a report. That wasn't a request from me for CEVAC information. And I asked the chair if I should send you my questions, and the chair said yes. So that I did. And I fully expected the CEVAC report. I appreciate how quick your response was with the general description. But as Peter just alluded to, for the budget, I don't know how we can pass a budget this year, not knowing if we're gonna make the raises, not make the raises, the property tax, and so on, and so on. So that I expect to wait for a report for, although budget, I believe we need those numbers. My request, and I can't pull the email up, 'cause the email server's not working for me. My request wasn't, my request was for the information, so I can better understand the process, so that when something lands before us in the consent agenda to approve something, that I actually have the details and understand. And since you brought up the police chief's search committee, you know, I asked you the question that day, that one, maybe two of the people that we were interviewing for final interviews didn't make the minimum advertised requirements. So I'm looking at them to try and better my understanding, so we don't continue to make mistakes upstairs. Back to the, back to the question about the individual questions. What specifically, and you mentioned the charter again, and it says, "The selectmen shall not normally be involved in day-to-day business." I truthfully have no interest in being involved in day-to-day business, and I ask you very few questions, and I don't go in your office very, very often at all. But we are an elected body here that the general public asks questions to. If I feed you a question from somebody, or send somebody to you, and they don't get a response, and then I get asked again, and I ask you and I don't get a response, what constitutes normally, and what is day-to-day business? And maybe this should be another, another night, so that we don't make this go on and on. But I'd like clarification. These memos are great. The, the comments in the Chronicle about Janelle and Ivy and newbies, and having to have government explain to us are insulting. And we're elected by a, by, by people in town Harwich, and they expect that we're gonna answer a certain amount of questions. And to me, again, I'm being asked questions with no detail, like tonight on the Chronicle report. There was no detail in there whatsoever. And I, and I heard that the finance committee chair make a comment from the, from the side, trying to answer one of those questions about discounts. It should just be in our packet. So if somebody asks us a question, we can answer it. And if, if, if anyone on this board specifically is interfering with you or Charlene, say it. You know, there's people watching this, people that wanna put it on social media. But I, I haven't seen any allegation made against me personally, by you or anything else, just comments. And, and what information am I not supposed to ask for? And in the email I sent, it's a, it was just a general question to, the way that, that phone is answered, "Selectman and Town Administrator's Office." So can I not ask Sandy and Ann questions? And there was no timeframe put on that, Charlene, did you read a timeframe, did I say?
No, there was no timeframe.
Matter of fact, I said, "Where is it, I'll go get it."
And I gave you what I, what you could look at.
So, but it's not, I don't believe that to be a board topic. Do you believe that to be a board topic? And is the board not following the charter?
Okay, my, my opinion of that is, that if it interferes with the rest...
I'm asking your opinion with all due respect, Peter. I'm asking, you, I'm directing the question to the town administrator through you, which you said, "Okay." I want the town administrator to tell us, because he took the time to write this,
Yeah.
what it is that we're doing wrong. And why I have to come up with a spreadsheet saying that the little amount of information that I asked for, that we have to tick off boxes, when we have two great office staff, a great assistant town administrator, and a town administrator. What am I asking for?
Excuse me, what do you mean you had to tick off boxes? What boxes did you tick off?
For your, for your spreadsheet that you created. The action items list, which should come, an action items list coming out of these meetings?
Yeah.
Fine. But what individual requests are you being asked that go against the charter, and that the board is doing wrong?
All right, Chris, you can jump in on that one, then I'll jump in afterwards.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm, during the discussion about the, about my performance, and there was issues that, you know, had been raised, that I'm not responsive enough. So I took a look at the way I operate, and are there better ways that I can operate to be more responsive? So the memo wasn't necessarily, "Oh, here's all the violations of the charter." The memo was, "Here's how I currently operate, here's how I'm suggesting that I operate." One of the things I've done, Michael, is, and I've had this in, in other towns, if you have an issue, and it's something that is imminent, pick up the phone and call me. I get very few calls from this board, other than, other than the chair. So if there's something that needs to be answered right away, I'm more than happy to, to work with the board to try to get those responses. I think that the question that I was trying to get to, and I appreciate Peter's input, is what happens when I get numerous individual requests? I think it's important for the general public to understand. We're running a multimillion-dollar business a year, trying to provide twenty-two different departments, various services throughout the community. On a day-to-day basis, there's plenty of stuff that goes through the office. And we have a lot of individuals that will come in and ask for individual requests. We have, obviously, the board. And I just need some mechanism to be able to prioritize and get a sense for how do we get to everything? And I can't, I mean, just, I've been in this business a long time. It's impossible to get to everything. So things have to be triaged. And my question, I guess, to the board, or my offer to the board, is how do we figure out a way to triage things that if board members are suggesting that I'm not being responsive enough, then how do we figure out a way to triage, so I can get, make sure that I get to board items quicker? And I appreciate Peter's input of, if, if an individual board member makes a request, what's wrong with having administration go back and say, "Can you guys give me a priority if I think it's something that's gonna take two or three days?" I mean, obviously, I'm not talking about the stuff that we can knock off in, in two or three minutes. That, that stuff, easy requests that are, that are short, and need for information, that's not an issue in this. It's when we get requests for information that are more substantial. I mean, CEVAC's a perfect example. There's probably two, there's probably two full file folders, two file drawers of material. And what does the board want? I, I mean, there's just a ton of material. So I need to get a sense for what we're looking for. I think tonight was helpful, that we'll, we'll focus on the finances, and we'll focus on the legal opinions. We already got the legal opinions, we'll, we'll put that together. I, I have one more to, to track down, and we'll get that to the board. So we have the, the legal flow for the rationale for what we did and why we did it. And then on the numbers, I did talk to Andy the other day, so we'll get the information from Andy on the actual dollars that have coming in on a monthly basis. But if, if the question is, "Why, I want things related to CEVAC and its two-fold file drawers," that's one thing. If it's specific to, "I wanna make a decision based upon the budget," then that's what I need to know. And in terms of, I, you know, it's interesting, the CEVAC, the question was asked, that was answered the same day. The lady that, I, I had only half the time, in terms of, I wasn't even the administrator for a good portion of that. The lady that was here from start to finish said, "Hey, that's a pretty good summary." So how much additional information, you know, is, is being asked for? Do you want the full two file drawers? Do you wanna come in and look through the two file drawers? Do you want us to pull out the relevant pieces of it? It's just having a discussion, so we could be more, more, in my opinion, so we could be more responsive to the specific individualized requests that we're getting.
I, excuse me, I had one the other day where I sent Sandy an email, I think at just about eight o'clock in the morning, 'cause I had a conference, or a call with some legal folks at ten, and asked her to send something specifically to town council, and somewhere else, I believe. And I didn't see it sent until like nine fifty, it wasn't sent. It got to be nine twenty or something, and I called her, and I said, "Did you get my email?" She said, "No, I put it at the bottom of the list. I saw you sent something in, but I just didn't get to it," you know? And she was working on something. And I said, "Excuse me, you've gotta stop, because I need this to have a fruitful discussion with town council at ten o'clock. You need to drop what you're doing and send it." And she did, she was very com, I mean, they're all very accommodating, there's no doubt about that. But I think without some sort of priorities, they're gonna get confused. And I think they do get confused, 'cause what's the most important thing? I think on the CEVAC thing, I mean, I'll harp again. We need to understand the numbers, you know, and their real estate numbers, there are, there are the revenue numbers, what the, what we actually got last year, what the projections are for this year, what the so-called split is with, you know, with our, the Water Enterprise Fund, if you will, those things on a whiteboard or something, so that we can make adjustments and, and decide if we want, we as a board wanna move something around and, and get to an answer in the budget, if you will. So however we get there, to me, that's like the number one priority. But, you know, you guys can figure that out too, and set that up. And that's important, so Linda's been very patient, so. Linda?
Well, just to comment on the CEVAC thing, if you could also add, when all these documents were passed by town meeting and signed? 'Cause a lot of these are fairly old. Or at least they were passed three or four, five years ago, 'cause that's how long it took for this process to get done. I think in defense of people asking questions, we also don't know everything. And to point to our two new board members, all of the CEVAC stuff, being specific to CEVAC, happened before you got here. And so for them to ask questions, to want to be educated on something, I think is fair, Peter. Because otherwise, they're not gonna be able to make a good decision if they don't have some background information. So those are fair requests. I also think that if any of us make a request, and what to us looks like a no-brainer, and you look at it and say, "Holy moly, this is four days' worth of work," then you gotta contact us back and say... to contact us back and say, this is going to take me four days because of this, this, and this, and blah, 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 blah. And we have to say, okay. And, okay, can we get to it by the end of April? And you say, yeah, that I can get in. I think it's got to go both ways. I mean, if you look at one of our requests, and it's just like, you've got to be kidding me. Come back. You've got to do that, so that we can then say, okay, I guess I didn't realize I was asking for the immediate universe. So let's make that agreement as well, and try to be specific about our requests, what we're trying to get to, so therefore the information that comes back from Town Administration satisfies the request.
Well, we'll bring it here.
I'm not so wild about bringing it here, because I think that if somebody just asks for a document, that that shouldn't need a board vote. You know, I make a motion that, Michael, get these four job postings. I think that's foolishness. I think there's, we're going to have to feel our way through a little bit of this, because to have everything voted on by the board is going to stop things in its tracks. And I don't think it has anything to do with the charter that we ask for a piece of paper. I think education, getting that kind of information is important to the board. I think there are things that if Chris comes back and says, this is going to take empty nine days, then yes, the board should come back to the board through the Chair and have some, have a discussion, a brief agenda item that says, this is going to take empty nine days, and it's going to get done the end of April. Is everybody happy with that? I don't think that's unreasonable to do.
You know, I, just a suggestion. I find that it's helpful if you have a topic, I don't know, Elbra House, for instance. I'm assuming there's an Elbra House file downstairs. If you just come in and ask for the file and sit there and read through it, nine times out of 10, it's going to answer it. Seventy percent of your questions, maybe? And then, you know, you can say, okay, do you have this? Do you have that? I don't see this here. How did this happen? Or can you explain? This doesn't seem to work right, or something. But I always find it going through the file itself, because, number one, you don't know initially what's in the file to begin with, but it's information relative to that topic. So maybe that helps. Just a suggestion, I'm not pushing it, but it would be helpful.
I've done that myself, Peter. I've gone in and gone to Sandy and said, can I see the files on whatever? And she trots over, puts her little fingers in, pulls out files, because she knows where everything is.
Yeah, it's all public.
And I just go and sit and read through it. If I need a copy, I make a photocopy, hand her back the files, because I wouldn't dare put them back myself. Because I know I'd put them in the wrong place.
We don't either.
Yeah, you guys don't either, I can bet. And that has worked well, too. And I end up, you're right. I end up, I went in with 10 questions, and I have two left.
Maybe. Or at least you're leaving with some information.
Yeah, and I'm leaving with information. So I would encourage you to read the files.
Mike?
So, I still don't feel like I got an answer to my question. I appreciate what Linda just said about the new members. I did read the C-VAC file, in its entirety. The only one that understands it is the person that wrote it. What we asked for last week, there was no timeframe put on it, but we did ask for a report outlining, including the financials, and I was fine with that. The day-to-day interference and the following of the charter, the comments that the Town Administrator makes, are there specifics? And can I not ask Sandy or Ann for documents if I want to read them? And where I can find them? Is that day-to-day interference? And as far as what Linda just said, I don't mind coming to this table with everything every week. The Chairman will put it on the agenda, we could talk about it and vote every request. And Chris, I don't think can sit here tonight and say that he's gotten more than a dozen requests from me in a year, because I don't really ask. I generally, well, look, I don't go into department heads and tell department heads to do anything. I never have. So again, the references that are being made in the Chronicle to myself and the other new member, and prior to last week, another member of the board, they're not substantiated. Is there something this board is doing wrong? And in the matter of communication, and this is great for everything that comes up now, can I ask for a document downstairs? And with what I asked for to the, to one of the support staff downstairs that Charlene responded to, was I wrong in asking that question? And can I ask it?
Mike?
Yeah, I mean, as I indicated, Mike, you know, I'll make it clear. If it's a straightforward, simple request, there's no problem. There's no problem. So anything that's a little bit more involved, when you say you want information related to the chief search, do you want just the internal posting? Do you want the external posting? Do you want the minutes from the process?
I think I just asked for the job postings. I think that that's what the email request was for, was for the job postings.
Here's the way I think this lands. I think it's fine for individuals to make those kinds of requests. What I would request is that you can have the, and police is the wrong word, but you can have to at least monitor it to the point where staff knows that if it's disruptive to something else they need to get done, or it's not of any priority issue, that at least be fed back to the requester of the information to say, hey, I can't get it to you today, but, you know, Tuesday at 3:00 in the afternoon, I'll make sure I have it, you know, copied for you, or whatever it is, or come pick it up, or something. It's okay to put, I think it's good to tell the staff it's okay to push back and say, hey, either I don't have that, or it's going to take a lot of work. At least then the person requesting it, at least say, no, you know, that it's not going to be immediate, and we should, none of us should get, you know, flustered or whatever, embarrassed or upset that we're not getting something immediately just because we're bored of Selectmen, whatever. We don't have that privilege. And if it becomes something that's going to take too long, then I think we bring it here and just say, you know, is it something we want to push on a little bit? That's all. So... Charlie?
Just, the reason you got an email from me was because Sandy sent it to me, saying, yeah, what do you want me to do with this?
CC to us.
Yeah.
Mike? Thinking closing, I would just say that the Town Administrator would like us to respect how busy he is, and to limit what we're asking for, not be involved in day-to-day business. And I would ask for the same respect, that if he has a problem with any one of us, or as a group, that he brings it to this table and says it, and doesn't bring it to the Chronicle. Before I, before, we should have a conversation about it, rather than it being an article in the paper about something I'm doing wrong with no, no actual allegation. So I would just ask that you tell me what I'm doing wrong when I'm doing it wrong.
That's fair. That's fair. So let's try that on the action item register. Do we have a concurrence that, at least after town meeting, for things that the board does at this table, that we decide, we can decide they're actionable or action items, and try and work with a methodology by where we track them, let's put it that way? Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm. Is it just going to be items going forward? Because there are some things that are still being waited for.
If you want to populate this, or start to populate it, let's, you know...
Knock yourself out, okay?
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, let's get suggestions. The question is, do we start now, or do we wait till after town meeting?
Who's keeping the list?
Huh?
Who's keeping the list?
You know, we need to decide who's keeping the list, because you made the suggestion...
That's the other one, yeah.
I don't mind keeping the list, so...
Selective Chair, Selective Secretary.
Anybody have a burning desire to keep the list, other than Charlene?
I, if I may?
Yeah?
I think that falls under Administration. I think it falls into Support Staff downstairs and Administration. I don't, you know, they maybe give us a copy, as weekly copy, of what's been done. But, and we should keep our own lists, quite frankly.
Well, my idea is that our concept would be that either under Town Administration's report, or Selectmen's report every week, we'd at least review what's here. And, you know, at some point, someone wants to color-code this, so I don't know what we're going to do, but, you know, as the list gets longer and longer, or whatever, I think, you know, we need to know why things aren't done, or what the status is of things. So is everybody okay with Charlene keeping it? Or someone in...
People have items. Send them to me. So we can populate...
And maybe it should be posted in the Dropbox.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
What I'm saying is that it should be part of this report every week, so it should be in whatever the latest status is.
In the packet.
It should be in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
And it can be, by the way, you know, updated at the last minute or whatever, but I mean, I'd put it in the Friday packet or whatever, and then if something happens on Monday or the weekend, it gets updated, it gets updated. But that would be my proposal. So why don't we start with anybody who has some, I just call it lingering or old stuff or outstandings, outstanding's a better word, to pass it on to Charlene, and we'll start to populate this and get ourselves prepared to start using it once town meeting is done with, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And so let me back up a second, because we did spend some time talking about the C-VAC stuff. Can we expect that next week we can have a discussion about C-VAC?
Yeah, we have, we have the legal material. I think the request was, you know, why did Administration do what it did? I think that, and I think this is kind of part of the communication, you know, I thought the summary I provided was actually a pretty good summary of the decisions that were made. And, you know, to find out, well, it's not enough. You know, maybe we can get together, Mike, you know, quite honestly, and find out, well, what are the voids in that material that I'm providing, so that way I can try to fill those voids. But we have, the legal stuff is basically done. I think we've already provided the John Georgio opinion to the board, that the decisions that were made, you know, do come within the statutes for what we did, and the actions that have been recommended to the board were valid. We did not get a response to the detailed question that I sent to Mr. Rashes at the State, so I'm not going to be able to provide that to the board, because they just didn't respond. So that's why I think the board asked me to go. So we'll have that. We have a meeting tomorrow morning on the finances, so I will ask Andy about the finance piece, in terms of getting that answer on the finance piece.
Would you want to sit down with the Administrator and look at, go through what's there now and see what...
I'd be happy to, but just so the board, just so the board knows.
Yeah.
The question was asked, if the Water Enterprise Fund generates 43% of the income, are they, 43% of the energy, are they due 43% of the money? So it was kind of a self-answered question. The Water Enterprise Fund doesn't generate any of that electricity. It's on-town property. That's the question, I guess, is because there's offsetting expenses to that. And then the only other piece, besides the explanation, that we haven't gotten, which you've talked about a few times tonight, is we gave $300,000 worth of raises based on a projected number.
Oh, we gave raises?
We gave raises, okay, sorry. We gave raises based on a projected number. So those raises equal a certain amount of money. We then have a certain amount of solar revenue. That's a certain amount of solar revenue. We give a certain percentage to the Enterprise Fund. Are we short? Adding in the property tax, regardless of what deal was made, it's still an expense to the town. So if there's 100%, it's 300,000, and we have to give away a certain port, that's 65,000, really should be deducted from that amount of money.
And those are exactly the numbers.
So these are the numbers.
You want to play here in the board and sort out.
Right. So that's really the missing link, is all of the numbers. Andy's time. And then to make, finally, when we have this, because I've been talking about C-VAC for five months and years...
I know.
When we finally have this, we need to make an actual agreement with the Water Enterprise Fund, going forward with what the offsetting costs are and everything else, I think.
Okay. So let me ask the question, this week, are you...
If Chris would like to sit down and discuss that, I'd be happy to.
Okay. You guys sit down and go through the material you have?
Yeah, that's fine.
I think you understand, from my standpoint, I don't need so much the pile of paper. What I need is the number, I need to know the numbers and how, because quite frankly, I'm assuming this board can move things around if we need to. If we need to make them work so it works for, you know, town government, we can do some of that if we need to, but we need to know what those numbers are. So that's what I'm waiting to get in front of us. So why don't you two guys sit down, review what's there, let's see if we can bring something back to this board next week, we can have an intelligent discussion about numbers, okay? And pots of money, and see if we can work this out. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody?
This one?
Good? All right. All right. That was a great segue into Route 6 exit sign replacement, and numbering a scheme, and big giant signs, as I understand it.
Big giant signs.
Like signs across Route 6? Isn't that only one lane in each direction?
Pretty much.
And we're going to number exit 10 to be exit, what's the number, 67 or something?
Eighty-something.
Eighty-something, whatever.
Eight-eight? No, 12 is 88.
I think, just to maybe update a little bit, two things, Mr. Chairman. One, we did, actually, Charlene tracked down that they have not had their public hearing yet, so there has been no public hearing on the 25% design plans. And then, secondly, I know Angelo's not here tonight, but he did send back a email that he said, in the state of New Jersey, they do do the mileage markers for the exit signs, so he didn't really have as much issue with the exit signs in terms of that. He was obviously very opposed to the big signs over the roadway. I mean, that takes away from the historic character of the Cape. So I at least wanted to feed that back to the board, and I can certainly forward his email that he sent to me to the board members.
Yeah, the problem I have with it is, you think about this, and we probably all live with these grandiose signs they do on mile markers and all that stuff on the interstate. Interstate's a little different, they're Route 6. And, I mean, for 10 years, once they renumber it to 111, formerly 6D, you know what I mean? And that sign, and they, they're making signs, they're taking down good signs, they're putting up other signs, they're adding these other little riders' signs to them, and people, local people in particular, going, what? I get offered exit 10. What do you, you know, what is all this about? Seems like much ado about nothing. I also understand, though, that the funding to do this is in place, and once that's in place, it's like, they're not going to listen to you. But I think this board should at least go on record. Maybe we bring it up at next week's meeting, or maybe, let's do this, if the board wants to, we draft a letter to Mass DOT expressing our...
Discontent.
Discontent with this process, or concept, something like that. You can put the words together, but I think...
I thought that's what was supposed to happen tonight. I thought that last week we had asked for that letter to be written, expressing our winter of discontent here.
I don't remember that, but...
We were asked to put it back on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought I just brought it up.
Because it was under his...
It wasn't agenda-ized, is that the right word? So they wanted to have it formally on the agenda?
So is there any problem with bringing back next week some sort of a draft letter?
Draft letter, yes.
To say, okay.
I would suggest, too, we did this with the M-DAR, not that that worked out, the agricultural issue, but sending it to all the Selectmen across the Cape, obviously would generate a little bit more speed. So the objection is both to the mileage changes and the signage.
In my opinion, you know, I'm more adverse to the numbering system than I am to the signs.
To the signage.
And I hate the signs, but I...
I agree. I'm adverse to both. If it ain't broke, I don't see why we're fixing it.
I think the sign that's out there to exit 10 works very fine. The Chamber's going to weigh in on this. They think it's a great idea.
Well, also, I mean, I can just see all the business people have to now sit there and go through all their business cards, and all their literature, and cross out 6 and say 72.
How many jingles aren't going to work anymore?
How many jingles aren't going to work? I know.
Jeremy?
I just want to also point out, you know, I think it was about two or three years ago that East Harwich was added to exit 11 as a secondary sign, because it wasn't on the main sign. So this may be an appropriate time, as they're going through this, that we make sure that So this may be an appropriate time, as they're going through this, that we make sure that we get the proper locations and stuff on some of these signs, too. I don't know the extent of their program, whether or not they're looking at more than just those, but the other things. But there, there's a bunch of other signs, like, as you go between exit 11 and exit 10, it says there's no gas station or food until you hit exit 9. You know, stuff like that, that just sends people right by us, doesn't make a lot of sense, so, you know, I don't know what the scope of this, I know the signs, but I don't know, as far as the other signs that the state has, what they're planning to do. We may want to use this time as an opportunity to make sure we get those things in as well.
I think, Gwynn, if they hold a public hearing, now, you'd be, you know, wise to go there, we should be, you know, saying somebody there, et cetera, et cetera, to find out what it's all about, but, yeah. And Sandy, I can't imagine that you're opposed to this.
Well, it's part of a, a larger issue to me. I mean, you come down I-95, you get it, you get off in Providence, and you start into Massachusetts.
Where do we start to begin with, by the way? Were you in Florida, were you in Florida when we started?
Yeah, we were in Florida when we started, or Maryland, or wherever. And the sooner do you hit the Massachusetts border, when the roadsides are an absolute disgrace. There's litter, there's crap all over the place, it's never cleaned up, even down here in Little Harwich. The state doesn't mow its grass but once every summer. And so if you don't go out and mow it for them, it, it just looks like, you know, the town's, townside's great, but the state just is like, they don't care. It seems to me that there should be some kind of a movement afoot, to tell the state, instead of spending money on big fancy signs that nobody needs or wants, that maybe they should start concentrating on doing something about the roadways and facilities for the tourists that come down here. I mean, it's embarrassing, truly, once you've traveled the, the length of the coast, to hit Massachusetts and Cape Cod and see the mess.
Yeah, plus Massachusetts known for not having restrooms, not being friendly, you know, to folks that are trying to travel. The other thing is, my understanding is, this is like $300,000 they want to spend. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's the number I heard.
300,000?
Maybe it was only on Route Six, I don't know, or that segment of it, I don't know.
Yeah, and this only thing adds up into really big money over time.
Well, it could be used for something else, that's the point, you know? This is the cost, you're probably in favor of this, too.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just had the occasion to drive to New Hampshire last night, and up I-93.
Buying alcohol, or what?
Yeah, of course, you get no tax up there. But they still have their signs on I-93, big interstate, exit 1, exit 2, exit 3, exit 4, they didn't change them to the numbers coinciding with the mileage, so somehow, on a major interstate, in a state that lives free or dies, they're able to keep their numbers.
Uh, maybe they just didn't get to it yet, I don't, you know, I don't know. Yeah, it's just interesting, so. Okay, so we'll bring something back next week, addressing our displeasure, okay?
Sure.
All right. Town administrator's report?
Yeah, just, there was a, in the first item here, housing production plan update. We did have, I believe it was, Brooke Williams had made the request, and, and raised to our attention that the housing plan is out of date. So we have gone through and, and understand that the housing plan is in fact out of date. There was an effort done, I don't remember how many years ago, quite a few years ago, to have that plan updated. So Dave Spitz actually went to the CPC meeting, and was, got a appropriation from them, out of their administrative fund, of $5,000 to put that together. So what I put in the packet, just kind of looking at what was done several years ago, that effort was led by the assistant administrator at the time, and took into account all the folks from the different housing agencies. So just kind of using that as a model, that that's the way they had done it before, I kind of recommended in this that we do a similar approach, and that Charlene would, would kind of lead that, lead that initiative to get that up to date. I'm not sure, in terms of the timetable, how long that would take.
The woman who originally did the plan, Karen Sonnenberg, she is not available to start that until July 1, so we have a little bit of time.
So, so when you say that $5,000 has now been allocated?
Yes.
Is that to pay for this outside person?
Pay for the outside consultant, to help the, yes, help the group do it.
Do the plan? Michael?
Can I get a copy of the last housing production plan? The only thing I've been able to find is the cover.
Oh, you're kidding. Oh, we'll rectify that, but we have extra copies downstairs. Yeah.
There are, there are a lot of things that did not migrate their little way to the new website. And you go looking for it, and it's gone. So if there are those things, drop us an email, because, you know, we're...
Yeah, write a list, or something.
We're not on the site all the time, but...
As we find them.
It's as we find them, but I, but I, something like that, I can't find the housing production plan anywhere myself.
Is, is the cover on the website?
I found the cover.
On the website?
We have the cover right here.
But I found the cover.
This is the cover, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, this is basically the cover.
I think we put that in, we put that in the package, kind of the, not executive summary, but just the beginning.
That's actually page two.
And so can I be bold enough to ask, what, what's the actual, when you say this thing, I guess it expired, what's the actual timeline that these things have?
It's a five-year plan.
Okay, so we put it together, she can't start till, you said July 1st?
July 1st.
So is it going to be?
It's an update, so it should not take as long as the original plan took to, to draft.
Does that mean like 30 days, or is it?
Right, because I was from scratch.
September?
Probably 90 days. I mean, you know, you need time to review, and we also need to go through a public hearing process.
So it's going to be in September, before it gets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Put together?
Yep.
Okay. And then it gets sent to?
DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay.
Peter?
Yeah, wait, wait one second. And, and did anybody notify us that the current plan is out of date?
They don't do that.
Did anybody keep track? It's like the honor system?
Kind of. When they send you the letter saying your plan is approved, that's when they say when it expires.
Okay, but there's no...
So unless there's somebody, and the previous assistant, previous, previous, long gone, so.
Yeah, but there's no one that monitors the housing production plans of all the towns, and who's out of date and who's in date, I mean?
There, there's a chart on their website, but they don't notify you, and that's not one of the things you sit and go, oh, I should check and see if we're up to date, unfortunately.
Maybe the housing committee should do that.
Yeah, well, you'd think so, but, Linda?
We have a variety of, a, a number of five-year type plans in town, and they all have expiration dates, so it would seem like a logical thing, is that in town administration, those plans ought to be listed, and thumbtacked to a wall somewhere, where, once a year, you take a look at it, kind of like you look at your driver's license, to see, is your birthday's coming up, is this year, I have to get a new one? That maybe, that should be a, a central town administration list. You know, these are the 10 plans.
I hate to tell you, it's another spreadsheet that we need.
It is, but, you know, part of administration isn't, isn't just building bridges, it's also taking care of the Nits and Lice stuff. And this is what, and if we don't take care of that, this is where we end up with a plan that's two years out of date and a scramble.
Lou?
Peter, as a point of information, if you Google the Harwich housing plan, it pops right up. I'm not sure the cover of it pops up, but the plan pops up.
Okay.
Just a couple other items.
I mean...
Who would think to do that?
Yeah, I don't know.
It should be on our website.
Did you make that up?
Yeah, but, but they're public. No, no, it's actually...
No, no, but I mean, you just tried it, okay.
Just a, a couple other items. I think next week, we're going to be in on the single-use plastic bag prohibition summary. I was going to kind of allude to, if we're doing that, the issue came up in regards to the door-to-door, and how do we market that, and, you know, maybe that's something we could take a similar approach, if you like, the approach that we lay out for the, the single-use plastic bags.
You mean, this is the enforcement of it?
The enforcement of, well, actually, more the education first of it, to let people know that it's coming.